Good evening. Welcome to the study session, October twenty second, twenty twenty four. Don, I'm your role call please.
Yes. Councilmember Glesch.
Here.
Councilmember Sterns.
Here.
And Councilmember Gilmore is on Zoom this evening. It's a run muted a second ago. Can you hear us, councilmember? You're still muted, sir.
The record show that. Who's there?
I can see him. I don't know why that isn't working. Mayor Nesko.
Here.
Councilmember Sherman, or excuse me, Deputy Mayor Sherman is absent this evening. Councilmember Sapp. And Councilmember Gutierrez.
Thank you, Donna.
You're welcome.
Tom, if you can hear us, just raise your hand so we know you can hear us at least.
I I can hear you all now. Sorry, I'm here.
Want to make sure you can hear it when we started. All right. Tonight, Public Works Director Jay Harris has some information for information for us regarding pavement preservation program. That's a lot of P.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Jay Harris, your Public Works Director. So I have an update on our pavement preservation program. We just got this pavement condition rating program report done. The last one was done when I started here. It might have been done a little bit before that, twenty nineteen or something. We just had an update of our pavement condition survey and I want to go through the news with you. So first slide here, this is Park Street, twenty twenty one. I've been here for a little bit. This was, oh, I think it was about a two and a half inch depth. It might have been three inch overlay of the existing roadway. You see, it was pretty, pretty heavily cracked. A lot of that was, if you remember, the log trucks, SPI. This is not a truck route. And they changed their entrance or something and they started using Park Street, but they exploded it really quickly because there's really no base rock under it. And so we ended up with a really grooved roadway section. And so we put down three inches of asphalt on this stuff called Petromat. It's like a fiberglass grid that you pull really tight on the pavement. And basically, it pulls all of the underlying pavement together and it adds an inch or two of asphalt in total section, just geotextile. So it was, we put it down, but it's the roadway section needed like another two to three inches of asphalt to make it heavy enough for truck traffic. So we determined with that extra cost, it was like a quarter of a million dollars to add the extra asphalt. We also were concerned about the Seventh Street Bridge and trucks going over that bridge continually, which we own and maintain. That we worked and said, you know what? We need to find a different truck route. So. Right? And I can tone it down a little bit. So the trucks are moved to railroad is is a truck route. So the the trucks are staying on the truck route. So just real quick on that next, actually, I think I can do this.
There you go.
No, we got to do this one. Oh, did it? It's just a little slow. Okay, so I want to go through how pavements are classified. It's really important because this study, every street, the whole city was walked by the soul. And then they raided the roadway conditions. If you had a chance to read the full report, they go through a nauseam how they rate. What's really important that the couple people that did this rated them the same. So you end up with the same report on every street because one person couldn't do all this. So there's a standard rating system. So the pavement condition index PCI and PCR, which is the rating. So you have an index and a rating. Go interchangeably. So you'll see through the presentation and the report. Sometimes they're interchangeable a bit. Very good. That's a brand new roadway. Good. You can see the paving line down the middle. That's probably ready for a crack seal. That's typically when we try to get to stuff like that, which one? The the good one with the PCI seventy. Even the fair one, you could see, we would probably go attempt to crack seal, maybe do a little bit of remedial work. The very good, good and fair are the pavements that we need to catch before they turn to the poor, right? What happens is when you start getting water in there and the repetitive car and truck traffic, it starts to break it up and it the pavement alligators. You see what happens to very poor. You don't want to drive on that. And then a gravel road has a pavement condition index of zero. And they were not in the rating system. We do have some gravel road, a lot of alleys mostly, but some up on Capitol Hill, that sort of thing. Todd Rhodes is our Public Works Street Superintendent. I don't know if you know Todd. His goal by the time he retires is to have no gravel roads in the city. We'll see. So a crack sealing, at least expensive treatment. It prevents a lot of the moisture from getting into the underlying base rock. The fog seal is the next one. So you you crack seal first to take care of the big cracks. Then you hit it with the fog seal. It seals microcracks, the things that are hairline, the things you can't see, and preserves that pavement surface a little longer. Then you have a thing called a slurry seal. Those are really common. We don't do that here. But again, that's it's sand mixed with the fog seal. And it actually fills in the cracks better. It makes the road you see here, they look almost brand new when you're done. It doesn't add any structural component to the roadway though. It just seals off the surface. And you get about ten years out of a good slurry seal. Chip seal is the next type of pavement maintenance. You see different versions of chip seals. The one we did on thirteenth, I don't know if you remember that from a few years ago. We put down asphalt. We put the rock chips in it and then we fog seal over the top of it. It ends up as nearly white pavement. You could still get some ravelling and some some a little bit of surface wear. You can see a little bit of that here on this picture. But for the price per lane mile, it is, especially if you have something that was in. I went all the way to the front. Let's get back here. Something in the fair condition, you wouldn't, you wouldn't chip seal that poor roadway. It's 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 beyond that. But something in this fair condition, we typically chip seal with some digouts of the really all alligator spots. And then you got a pavement overlay. You can do a thin lift overlay, which is one inch. I've done quite a few of those in the last city that I worked for. They hold up pretty darn good, especially if you don't have a lot of truck traffic and you're just trying to repair the surface by ten fifteen years out of it. And then like on Park Street, though, we put down two to three inches. That's pretty typical for an overlay. Then you get to the grinding and inlay projects. That's where you take the pavement out and you put new pavement back in again. That's for the highly distressed pavements. Usually the base rock under it is sufficient and all you got to do is replace the asphalt surface. If the base rock is no good under it, usually it's not deep enough or it's highly contaminated because the water has ran into it for so long. And you get mud in it and all sorts of stuff. You can see Turner here in two thousand eighteen. I found a picture of that. And anyways, that was a full depth replacement where we went in, dug out the whole roadway, put in new base rock and put in new pavement. Very expensive.
Where does our, are we still have cement roads around? Asphalt, not asphalt cement. What what do we do?
Portland Cement Concrete. So yeah, these are asphalt concrete roadways I'm talking about, primarily downtown or Portland Cement Concrete Roadways. I would say from first to like seventh, eighth, right in that range. Probably three quarters of the roads are are still concrete paving, Portland Cement Concrete Paving. When we developed the design and construction standards, we made sure one of the goals in there was to preserve the the concrete roadways. And this was a council decision. We talked about it. And so the way it works is this, is if more than half of the road has asphalt paving like this, you can continue that block and continue and finish that block with asphalt paving. But if it's less than fifty percent, which is most of the roadways, we will go in when we're patching and doing things and bring back the Portland Cement roadway, just like Cota Street is one of them. Nineteen thirties, some panel replacement repairs, but the maintenance interval on concrete is well less than asphalt paving. But it's like triple or quadruple the cost, right? So is there a cost benefit thing? The reason why they did a lot of these roads downtown in concrete is because asphalt wasn't available back then. All they knew was concrete roadways. So great question. Also, when you're driving a roadway, a lot of these older roadways, like Olympic Highway North. In the nineties, when we repaired it last time, it had a concrete roadway from the the state under some asphalt. And you could tell if about every twenty feet, you hit a crack, another crack, another crack. Every twenty feet, you're going to the thumb, the thumb, the thumb, when you're going down the road. Usually there's, they call it the old market road is laying under there is Portland Cement Concrete. In the nineties, when they redid Olympic Highway North, they brought in a massive weight and dropped it and pulverized that concrete under the roadway before they overlaid it way back when. And I'll I'll talk about that section of roadway in a minute. So crack seals every three to five years. Fog and slurry seal coats every seven to ten years. These are just general guidelines. If the road's heavily used, interval increases, right? If it's a low use road. We did some chip seals that are ten to fifteen years old and they're starting to show their wear. But we've gone back and crack seal them because you you want to keep crack sealing those roads and they need it. But if they're really low volume roads, you you get some miles out of them. After a while, though, when you keep doing a slurry seal or zip seal, usually you have to overlay the road or do something to it. Those are just maintenance things. Eventually, you have to either put new asphalt down or dig the road up or do something that is quite a bit more expensive. So full removal of the pavement and base rock is needed when the surface is highly fractured and the base rock section is inadequate, contaminated or it's just ended at the end of its service life. And then if you fully remove the roadway and put it back in again, you're going to get twenty plus years out of that asset. You know, again, depending on traffic and loading and all that. So it's the most expensive, but it's the most reliable. And I guess there's one more than that. If you put a Portland Cement Concrete roadway in, you'd even extend the service life even farther. The problem is, is you get into these really expensive and you'll see the numbers in a minute. We got to try to stay out of these extensive, expensive repairs. So and I talked about this, the interval schedules of these type of things all vary with traffic, loading. Soil subgrade support. So if you go up on the hill where there's a lot of gravel and it's really well draining, putting the water into that pavement section, it runs through. It doesn't puddle under it. Down here, though, we call them bird baths. If it puddles, they turn into alligators, which turn into potholes. And then we got to go dig it out, try to break the seal and repair that that pottle until we get back to fixing the road later. So the pavement condition index, so in twenty twenty nine, we had a rating of six, I'm sorry, in twenty twenty, we had a rating of sixty nine. Back then, we were estimating that about five hundred eighty thousand a year going to the roads would maintain the pavement condition index. And so actually, I was incorrect there. They estimated that at our current funding level, we're actually going to drop in the rating, using our current funding. That engineer at that time said, hey, you don't have enough money going out here. We're using the TBD funds. And you you're not putting enough money on these roads. You're going to have issues. And it actually rates higher now if you read the report. And and I'll tell you a couple of reasons why. So in twenty twenty, they said you need one point two million and we weren't spending the TBD dollars of one point two million. But when you look at the total value of projects, and we'll get to a slide in a minute, with using TBD fund and leveraging Brockdale, where we paid about fifteen cents and got eighty five cents from the state, Redwood Avenue, it was probably a forty sixty. We're leveraging the TBD funds on these high dollar projects to try to get to that one point two million dollar level, even though our city coffers, we don't have that kind of funding coming in. So this little chart down here is a really good thing. So what it shows is D day hits on any pavement surface. So if you've been out to the brand new subdivision Meadows Edge, it was paved about a year ago. If you drive out there twelve years from now, you're going to see some stress fractures and issues out there, right? You want to be at that top. So you see the two dollars for preventive maintenance here. So if we're crack sealing, chip sealing, slurry sealing, especially on the local roadways, we sort of bounce along that top black line. Okay, but if you let it get to year fifteen, you're doing some major repairs on that roadway. If you don't go out and do anything. So that's what that diagram, this is for asphalt pavement, not for Portland Cement Concrete pavement. So we don't want that to happen. We're trying to stay out of expensive repairs. So it's like the roof of your house. If the shingles start looking old and you get a leak here and there, you got to replace the roof, right? Same thing with the pavement. You got to stay on it. So here's the the map from twenty twenty. That was the pavement condition index of sixty nine. So the green roads were good, the more magenta roads and red roads were the ones that had low pavement condition indexes. So some of the projects in the last four years or so, we did about four point four eight miles, which is quite a bit of roadway in five years using the existing TBD funds. Leveraging, so I talked about Park Street, it's down by Neyland Park there. Down below Park Street, those little tiny projects were done by Cascade Gas. When they went in there, they put a bunch of services in. We had them chip seal the roadway. It's one of our design standards. If you rip up the roadway, you got to bring it back to life again. And so we did that. You can see the Alder Street connection there. You can see a little bit of paving we did up on Capitol Hill up there. You can see some stuff we did in the Mountain View area. You got Brockdale Road there. So we did pretty darn good in in four years. And then we don't show the crack ceiling map and the pothole repair and spot paving repairs where we'll go do hundred feet, that sort of thing. These are the major projects, not the minor, more day to day type of stuff. So here's the new map that came out. Our average actually went up to from sixty nine to seventy two, which is the good news. It means that the investment that we're making in our system is working, right? A lot of it is street crew getting out there and really staying on these things. And you can see a lot of green on the map. You can see some red and magenta, some yellow. So, you know, we're, we want to stay out of the reds. We want to stay in the magenta and greens. And so if you look at the good pavement sections, the yellows, those are the ones that you go fix first. Okay, and I've gone through that. I'll go through it more in a minute, but those are the ones that we could still save for low dollars. And you don't go to red, which the Forex type of repairs. So the the best investment we can make right now. So you can see the the very good and the good and the poor and the very poor is all broken out there. So in this new analysis, this report, I know you guys read it cover to cover. Actually, you didn't need to, but I put it in there if someone was eager and wanted to see how they put one of these together. So with with no pavement maintenance, we'll drop down from the seventy two to a sixty one in twenty twenty nine. And that's estimated by the software program, right? And it might not drop that far. It might drop a little more. So the projects that we've gained, obviously, we lose today. They threw this in here. If we want to go from the seventy two to an eighty five in the next five years, we need to put thirty million dollars in the pavement system. We didn't think that's very realistic. There's not enough grant opportunities out there and the Transportation Benefit District is funding the program, but not at a super high level. Also, the street program is being supplemented by the General Fund. This year it was four hundred, four hundred thousand. And next year it's about the same. So it's being propped up by the General Fund also. So that third bullet point, so if we want to maintain the PCI seventy two, they're saying that we need ten and a half million spent in the next five years or two point one million a year. And we have thirty eight and a half center line miles of roadway. So that isn't lane miles. That's the center lines, okay? So to be able to do that, I mean, obviously, we don't have two point one million a year coming in in TBD from the General Fund. Then we have some other gas tax sources and some other smaller funding that comes in, but we need to leverage grants. And so we need to complete leverage grants, complete self perform projects like what we just did up on Capitol Hill. We need to do joint projects with Mason. I'm sorry. Self perform projects are ones that we would go do like small two hundred foot patches. That'd be the crack sealing program that we have, potholing to try to keep the water out. The joint projects are like up on Capitol Hill with Mason County. We just completed that. The prior year, we completed Front Street with them. And then also we have projects that general contractors, where we go out to bid and have a general contractor take care of it. We did that with Park Street, Redwood Avenue. A project next year is around the courthouse. We're trying to upgrade some of the Portland Cement Concrete pavement there. Probably going to have to bring in a specialist for that. That's a pretty heavy hitting. So they're estimating that about four in the next five years that out of that ten and a half million, that we have about four and a half million goes to rehabilitation or repair. And then about six point one million to preventative maintenance. So staff is recommending that we shoot just to maintain the seventy two. It's a strong C and or it's a lower C if you're in school, but for most agencies, that's a good number, okay? And try to improve on it. And a report five years from now, it'd be nice to see that was seventy five, right? And we show that we just keep climbing out of this deferred maintenance. So future projects, we got to stay on yearly crack sealing, patching, small paving projects. We just received the grant for Olympic Highway North, five point one million. That road is shattered, right? I mean, you guys have driven it. We are trying to, we can't let roads get to that situation again, especially on these major collectors. We got to get to them sooner so they don't cost as much. And we were lucky to get a a grant for a significant amount of money for that. We have an overlay in twenty twenty five with Mason County. We're still determining exactly where we needed this report. This is our roadmap, right? And so on the overlays, I'm probably going for the the fair to poor, most likely poor roadways is what we're going to overlay. And then the joint project with Mason County, the chip seal, likely is going to be a lot of the fair type of roadways. And then in sections, if they're poor, we'll go in with our small paving projects and and pull some panels and take care of it so we can chip seal over the top of some of those. And then we have a general contractor next year working on some of the downtown concrete roadways, which every year we need to keep investing in these concrete roads and not forget about them. They've been sort of neglected for a little too long. So I'm going to make some summary statements here. So the street fund provides for the maintenance operation of the largest asset of the city. This is the most expensive asset that we have. It exceeds the wastewater plants. To properly operate and maintain the street system, we do need more city staff out there eventually. We're running on vapors with just a few people to get out there and do that. We are borrowing people from other departments. And then we charge their time card to the street fund, but down the road, we need to get at least another street person out there working on potholing and that sort of thing. We've done good on equipment purchases. We got the new patch truck, for example, which was a big win for these guys. We, it drops one person needed. The old patch truck was really laborious. You know, you'd have to send like four people out. They're thinking they can get away with three, maybe even two, depending on what they're actually doing, if they don't have to flag a lot and that sort of thing. So to maintain the existing pavement condition index, additional revenue will be needed to complete the maintenance and restoration projects. That's that grant funding. That's leaning on the county's maintenance division to come in and help us out. So locally acquired street funds is the largest source of revenue for the majority of cities in Washington. We don't, not state or federal funds. Because we have to go and get a grant for those and we don't get them directly, right? So we've been very successful in leveraging our funds. My last job, you guys, we didn't, when we went out trying to get money, we got a lot of no's. We're doing well here. We really are. The state of Washington supports these smaller cities pretty darn good. And that would be for water, for sewer, for streets. We're getting the good, high level support from the state reservoirs. We've talked about that, right? So our current funding situation, the direct funding is not unique. Most Washington cities have the exact same problem we do. That the revenue coming in without grants from the state or other agencies, we wouldn't be able to keep up on our maintenance. The TBD, Transportation Benefit District, that's the sales tax, which is point two of a percent. It's going to sunset in February of twenty twenty six.
April.
April. I was close.
You were close.
So in twenty twenty one, we got about five hundred and fifty two thousand in TBD. This current year was about six seventy five. So twenty five percent of the pavement in the city is is good to poor condition. We're going to be targeting that pavement. And then also keep the good pavement at good, right? That's usually crack sealing and some minor potholing. So a proper preventive maintenance of all surfaces surfaces will reduce the number of higher cost overlays and full reconstruction, which is more expensive. Also, planned proactive pavement maintenance project reduces reactive labor and material costs for our street maintenance division. What that means is when a road starts alligatoring out and I start potholing it and doing all that, you have no idea when the when the potholes are coming up, right? We're out there. We get phone calls. We're driving around. We're reactively deploying people. Grading gravel roads is a huge problem. They pothole out pretty quickly. In some instances, they don't get a lot of traffic. We can get, you know, three or four or five months out of them. But the reactive maintenance is what we need to try to get out of because when we're planning our people every day, it's way better than the phone ringing and you sending them to places. You you never get caught up, right? So improved and well maintained streets increase livability, decrease automobile maintenance costs. When your car hits that big pothole, guess what? Right? It hurts sometimes. Improves property values, that makes sense, and business activity for the entire community. So here's sort of our policy that I've been talking about, and I tried to develop it into a slideshow here. So the street fund projects that use existing revenue sources are currently prioritized this fall. And the reason why I did this is because there was, when I started here, there was something like, what was it? Twenty blocks of paving with TBD or something every year? And it was residential paving. But it was just a little willy nilly because, one, we didn't have enough money to go do twenty blocks. And it all depended on what twenty blocks you were talking. and it all depended on what twenty blocks you were talking about. And then was it a collector? Was it a residential street? You know, was it in poor? Was it in good? There was no metrics to that decision. So, and the last time I gave this slideshow, this same metric was in there about, I think this is the right way to do it, and I just wanted to make sure everyone was on the same page, that preventive maintenance projects on arterial and collector roadways that have fair to good pavement condition indexes, the heavily traveled roadways, keep doing preventive maintenance. Be on those every year or two, right? Don't give up on those, because those are the ones, when they start falling into disrepair, the trucks just beat the heck out of them, right? So then the next would be preventive maintenance projects on local roadways with fair to good pavement condition indexes. They don't get pounded by the trucks. You can leave them be for a little while longer, but you do need to get out there and do those next. Rehabilitation or reconstruction projects on arterial and collector roadways with fail, poor, or very poor pavement condition indexes. What that is, is that local road over there that ten people travel a day, that is in a topsy-turvy condition, we don't invest in that first. We invest in the Olympic Highway North, ones that we're getting four thousand cars a day on, right? And there's just not enough money to go around, so I can't go fix those low-volume local roadways right away, right? And then D is where we would get to those next under this strategy. And then the very last one is try to get wins on gravel roadways. One of the reasons why we push Capitol Hill paving ahead on gravel roadways is those are really steep roadways, and we're getting heavy washes on them with the rains. We were up there every two, three weeks trying to grade them. The emergency responders were spinning tires in the gravel because they were so steep. And so we made the call that just for risk management, we need to pave any steep gravel roadway. We can't, and then anything sort of nearby, because we're already there, right? And so gravel roadways are sort of a little bit of the backseat, and I don't want them to be. I mean, don't get me wrong, if we had all the money in the world, we would be getting out there and getting on them, but we want to try to prioritize the best we can. Something else I need to mention is that if you have a sewer line, a water line, storm drainage lines, gas lines, anything under existing road, you've gotta get those fixed before you go and do any major paving activity on it. You can't go and do a sewer line repair, or water line repair, or that sort of thing in a road that you just paved. It's just not good public policy. So that's on there, and Mike knows we allocate funding each year from the utility funds to go to roadway projects. Sometimes when we go look at the roadway, though, we miss that that water line is really bad, right? And so sometimes we will go pave it anyways, but we're trying to get better about that and trying to get our engineering division who designs things ahead of the curve here. So we know, so we're putting in the water line like the year before, and then coming back and paving it a year later, sort of thing. So that's sort of the goal on the utility, because you don't want to pave and then turn around and dig it back up again.
We have a primary no-cut policy anyway.
The no-cut policy is an interesting policy. That was adopted probably in eight, two thousand eighteen, or something before I got here. So they call it a no-cut policy, and it's actually with, I go pave a roadway with public notice to the gas company and electric company. They can't go dig down the middle of the road, and I can't either. If it's an emergency, I can, though. For development connections, though, if they're unplanned projects, they can go do it. So, but they have significant restoration standards in the no-cut policy. So you could trench up a roadway, but you're grinding and inlaying and chip sealing and trying to make it new again, right? So it's allowed, but the cost is significant to be able to do that. And it's a good policy. I think it's written well. Because you can't go pave a roadway, and then a year later, there's a fifty lot subdivision that needs to go gravel water line. You know, it just doesn't make sense. You gotta allow some cutting of the new pavement surface. So that's it. I threw in a picture of Railroad Avenue. I don't know what the cross street is there, but nineteen twelve, we came a long ways. I don't think many of those buildings are around anymore.
Well, it didn't happen, but now I'm twice, and then the mayor at the last time said, okay, everything's gonna be out of brick. I read that somewhere, maybe in the library.
Okay. Jay, this is a timely presentation, because I believe it's November twelfth. We have a study session on the Transportation Benefit District, and this obviously feeds into that a great deal.
Yes. So the renewal of the Transportation Benefit District, if council chooses to do that, would need to be, I think you, discussions you had a couple of months ago was November, a year from now, is it be on the ballot?
Right.
Yeah. So the plan, if council has to decide they want to move forward with renewing the, well, you're renewing the existing levy of the point two percent. You're not raising it, whatever. I mean, you could consider things like that. But we need to check, and if you could even raise it, but the renewal is what the subject is. For about six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, it allows these type of programs to exist. With that, without that funding, and if the general fund has more woes, the street division's gonna have a lot of problems, that I won't have matching money for those bigger projects. And I could probably get out and crack seal, pothole, and mow. We do a lot of roadside mowing, probably seeing us out doing a lot of leaves right now. And then when we get snow, we have a significant snow response here with the de-icer, gravel, sanders, and then plows. So the street program really depends on the TBD funds, the way it currently exists today.
And your report really does show that we have an ongoing need. I mean,
That's correct. And without grants, our pavement condition index would be failing right now.
We'll go back ten years. Without that TBD, the last ten years, what would we have gotten then?
Yeah, a lot, and you will see that at the next presentation.
Without the TBD, the last ten years, how many of these projects that you talked about?
I'd say three-quarters of them wouldn't have happened. And so our pavement condition index instead of a seventy-two would probably be in the high fifties, a little sixties sort of thing. And we would be in peril. The city I came from was in peril. And that, and it takes a long time to dig out of the upper fifties, like a decade, right, worth of planned projects like we're doing here. So we need to try to hold on with the rope if we can, would be my recommendation.
Yeah, I remember when the TBD passed, and when the pitch, the DVD was to fix roads, and people really wanted their roads fixed, their side roads and everything else. And back when we started it, I was still in the audience when it passed, but it was only about two hundred thousand a year for those twenty blocks. Some close to twenty blocks, and then obviously overtime, it's more expensive. But yeah, I think people just really wanted their roads fixed, and it was a pass very high, it's like sixty-seven percent. Okay, yes, we're gonna give you this money to fix the roads, and I think that we've done a good steward of that money. We've used it for maintenance, we've used it for grant matches, we've used it for, for, you know, local projects. We did do the twenty blocks a year for probably two or three years. It was about two hundred, two hundred point five thousand bucks a year. I remember when it started getting a little higher than that. And we came back, Jeff came back to us and said, hey, we gotta rethink how we're using this money now. We want to use it more, some more of it for maintenance, so in event, you know, going into poor condition, I think we changed that. It used to be percentage. It was like grant match, and it was like maintenance, and it was like money for, you know, the local roads. I don't, I think we changed that a couple of years ago by then.
You also remember that our lane miles in the road are probably gonna increase. We took on Meadows Edge. We're doing a lot of pre-application conferences for development proposals. And so our lane miles are gonna go up in the next ten, twenty years. And what I like about the sales tax mechanism is that it's a fair share. You know, everybody's paying that, whether you're driving through here on the road and stop at a grocery market, or whether you live here and order something on Amazon. It's spread very equally around the system. So as our lane miles increase, that sales tax should increase some also.
It makes sense, because David County employees were, they'd come in here to Walmart, Safeway, Red Meyer, and when they buy their groceries or their taxable, they're paying for the roads that they're driving on as well, so I like that version as well.
So any questions?
You might just feel part of that, you you will pay for deferred maintenance, you avoid the exponential cost of the inclusion from the others, you know, two dollars, four dollars, twelve dollars. Present the integrated piece, weight of the fence, and thus, we want to knock it down. So what I wanted to say, thank you for the past four or five years, the roads have been looking better. Railroad's, Big Brother's a lot better. The store district was great. I know the road that comes up, where you highly don't in that area, a lot of action there, really nice, a lot of, in that condition is very nice, but it's a story district, so. I'd like to keep that momentum going, once this happens to seventy-two. How do we do that by minimum, minimum budget? And I think it was remarkable that we were able to make our road, so. Thank you for your hard work. It's been hard work, and it's helped to really help you. You keep our roads on the same path, and at least thanks for
Yeah, and the thank you goes to the maintenance division. You know, eighty percent of it, I'm the guy that's just in an office and plan and directs and grows all of that, right? It's the boots on the ground over there, the Todd Rhodes, you know, and the Donnys and Chicken, and all those people over there, really make it happen. And I mean, big applaud to them. And so if you see the maintenance guys, you know, give them a pat on the back, because this is their win. You know, picking up the three points when, you know, four years ago, they said, you know, you weren't gonna increase the PCI, your funding level, and we did it, right, is a testament to them.
They're busy this week with leaves, aren't they?
They're busy with leaves right now.
Bunch of them all over town Monday, I think, how.
And anything you can do to help along your frontage is important. You know, if you have a park strip, you know, if you can clean your road up along front and, you know, take leaves out of there, that helps our sweeper. They get choked up, and if they get too thick, we have bad problems with the sweeper. That's why you see us out there battling, because you gotta get them when they're not as wet and when they're a little thinner. And then if there's a storm drain plugged up, get a rake and attempt to pull it off, but don't pull the grate up. Don't go there, because it'll wash down in and can plug the pipe up. But if you can clean your grate off in front of your house and keep it cleaned off this time of year, that really helps us a lot. And because we don't want people's houses to flood, because you can get a big pond if the inlet, you know, stopped up for hours on end. And like this weekend, we're supposed to get significant rain, and the leaves are washing down too. So if people can try to keep the leaves off the grates this time of year, it'd be really appreciated.
Tom, I haven't, I wasn't paying attention to you up there. Do you have any questions?
No, nothing from me. Thank you.
All right. Any questions, other questions for Jay or?
Um, I am part of it for every dollar sent on, you know, reservation, they, a hundred dollars or a hundred.
Yeah, and that's a one to ten. Yeah, one to six is somewhere in, probably in a better realm. Some of it is, all maintenance costs have gone up, the reconstruction. And so it'd be one to ten for a full-depth reclamation, where you're tearing the whole road up, base rock, hauling it out of there, taking it to the dump site, and then coming in and putting in new base rock, compacting it, and then repaving it would be a one to ten. And then it'd be down from there, though. So just simply the crack sealing and the chip and the slurry seals are really important. And so we need to really ramp up those programs and preserve the pavements that are already out there that are the goods and the fair. And really get a handle on that, and then still get to the poor roadways, though. But make sure we've taken care of the good and the fair, and the ones that are salvageable first, is what our goal is right now. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Jay.
I got one last plug for everybody, is My Civic. Okay, that application, download it. If you go to, on your iPhone or your Android, City of Shelton, download that app. There's a little wheel that comes up. You can report an issue, pick streets, take a picture, and my guys get it, okay? So if it's something that you could see is gonna turn into a major problem soon, get it to us, because the communities are eyes and ears, right? And so it's really important that people help us with My Civic. And we get, and I think we're probably averaging a couple hundred requests a month, maybe one fifty. That's code enforcement and sewer and water. But we just need people to help us out, because we're not in every neighborhood all the time. We sort of are right now with the street sweepers, but they're street sweeping, right? They're not looking for pavement problems and such, so that would really help if people could do that.
But yeah, every vocal I get about something in the city, I say, hey, we downloaded the app. So I had actually a neighbor that had a wall, something to prevent water, like a little hump, that the city put in for them, and it kind of went away, and I said, download that, make a picture and upload it. They were there the next day.
Yep.
And they were fixing that for them, so.
The problem is, is if you call me or the city manager, and then I type an email to somebody, then it goes over there with their other fifty emails, it's not very efficient. That picture tells a thousand words, too. I mean, I type and type and type trying to explain what a problem is. Sometimes I just get my car and just use My Civic and just report the app myself for a phone call I took in. But whenever I take a phone call, I ask people to try to download My Civic and use it. It's also available on the city website. If you have a PC, uploading the photo really helps us. And you could do that also at the city website. Very helpful for us.
For roads, parks, code enforcement, other categories.
There's like Nuisances, homeless, camps, that sort of thing. Yep.
But you can actually put all kinds of stuff. You can do it with your name, or you can do it anonymously as well. But it's actually a pretty good app. I do learn a lot.
And we get back to you, too. So what happens is you send us a request, you'll get a message saying it's been opened, it's been received, it's been scheduled or logged in. And then a few days to a week later, it will show up, you'll get an email saying it's been completed. And then you can email back if you got a question about it, and it will say who worked on it and all that. It's a really good app.
Well, thank you, Jay.
You're welcome.
All right. Council having a new addition reception tonight? City manager, interim city manager.
Just a couple of reminders for council. Early next week, we'll publish the November fifth council packet. It'll be a pretty big one, because we'll be considering with the public hearing the twenty twenty-five budget. So we'll start the evening with a Shelton Metropolitan Park District public hearing and consideration of the budget for them. Then in the regular city council meeting, we'll have the twenty twenty-five budget for consideration, and we'll take you through that in some detail. Not just the general fund, but all of the funds. Department directors will be here as well to talk about their budgets, allow you and the public a chance to ask any questions. We'll have a briefing accompanying that, along with the ordinance that would be considered then two weeks later. We'll have the property tax called the ad valorem, property tax for your consideration with the briefing. And then the twenty twenty-five master fee schedule with the briefing to explain it, and then I'm including one with track changes, so you can see where were we in twenty twenty-four with any changes in twenty twenty-five. And that'll all be on November fifth. So there's a lot coming to you, and I just wanted to give you a heads up that we're working hard on it this week, and the city clerk will have it published sometime early next week. Thank you.
All right. So there's no meeting next Tuesday? It's not on here, but.
Fifth Tuesday.
It is the fifth Tuesday. It is the fifth Tuesday. So we will be back here on November fifth? November fifth, so this meeting is adjourned at six fifty P M.